We've scheduled a meeting before we get into all the business. We'll acknowledge our best and then some recognition.
This evening, we have several, our best and then some recipients. The first one is Luanne Birchfield from Bright Adventures Pre-K. Luanne, are you here?
It's Lawson.
That is not what it says.
They left the S off.
Okay? I am innocent this time. Lawson, I will have you a new certificate printed up. I apologize, my friend.
See, that's okay.
Okay? Thank you for understanding.
So Lawson is receiving this award for our classroom because our classroom would not be the same without him. To be only four years old, he shows respect, kindness, and adaptability with such ease. In our diverse pre-K classroom, Lawson steps up to help whenever a friend is in need of someone to play with, or if a teacher needs help cleaning up, he's right there with a smiling face. His smile can light up a room. Show him your smile. Do it. Both his loving heart and bubbly personality are something we all desire to have. We are so lucky to have him in our classroom this year.
Thank you, Lawson. Also from Bright Adventure, Bright Adventure, excuse me, George Cotilla. George, are you here? He was supposed to be here last week, I mean, last month as well. We'll just keep trying. How about Luke Rodeck? Are you here tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. Savannah Miller then, from East Elementary. Yes, not, we'll just keep going down the road. Eli Wolf. Then how about Ella Montez from West Elementary?
Her teacher was unable to be here tonight and asked me to present this to her. First of all, Ella is a treasure. I love her. She spends many hours at the school with her mom, who is the PTO president, so she knows what school's all about, and she knows what working after hours means too, don't you? It is a tremendous honor to present the our best and then some award to Ella Montez. This recognition is reserved for a student who not only meets the highest expectations in our classroom, but consistently exceeds them. She shows excellence in her character and her academic achievement. Ella shines as a bright example of kindness and compassion in our class community. She is a truly caring classmate, always ready to offer a reassuring word, a patient ear, or a helping hand. Her helpfulness extends beyond simple tasks. She consistently looks for ways to make the classroom a better place and to support her peers, demonstrating a genuine commitment to the well-being and success of everyone around her. Her heart is full of caring and giving, and it makes her an absolute pleasure to teach and a wonderful friend to many. In addition to her outstanding character, Ella exceeds academically. She approaches every subject with enthusiasm, a sharp intellect, and an impressive dedication to learning. Her work is always thorough, thoughtful, and of high quality, showing a deep understanding of complex concepts. This award celebrates not only her natural abilities, but her incredible work ethic. She consistently gives her best effort and then some, pushing herself to grow and master new skills every day. Ella, you are a superstar student. You have a clever mind, and you also have the kindest heart. You show everyone in the class that being academically gifted and being helpful is the best combination. True success means you're doing your very best work and helping your friends shine too. I'm so proud of all the amazing things you are doing this year. Congratulations on earning this award. I'm so proud of you, Mrs. Taylor Smith.
Also from West Elementary, Olivia Moore.
Hi, I'm Ayan Zelenka, 3rd grade at West, and this is my excellent student, Olivia Moore. So when a teacher imagines a student who makes the challenging work of teaching very rewarding, think of a girl like Olivia. She's the kind of student who sets goals and she follows through. For example, we've been using those old tiny Pizza Hut, you get the little personal pan certificates, and we started in October and she met the goal, and we started in November and she met the goal. So she's reading outside of school, which is one thing that all of our students could really do, everyone can do more of. And another example of the goal setting that Olivia does is the new AR system that East and West have. She frequently comes to class, like, "I've read this book the night before, do I have time to take an AR quiz?" And she always really beams with pride when she tells us how many points that she has. So Olivia always exhibits a really respectful attitude towards the teaching staff and the other peers in the classroom. She's supportive and helpful to others. One of the fine characteristics, I wrote to her mother one time saying I thought that Olivia had a lot of empathy. We had a special needs child enroll in our room about seven weeks ago, and Olivia notices when he struggles, and she goes over and helps him. And when I texted that to her mom, her mom was just kind of simply said, like, "Good human." And this is Olivia, she's just a good human. Another example of when Olivia kind of sees the things that other kids might need, somebody walks in tardy and we've already started the ball rolling, she might go over there and collect all their materials for them so they're not, you know, starting already behind. So she notices what other people need, and she jumps in without even being asked. Another thing that I really think Olivia does well, she's pretty brave on a consistent basis, you know? It takes a lot of courage and guts for a child to say, "You know, I don't really get this," or "Can I have more time?" Or "Can you explain this to me more?" And she's not afraid to admit that, you know, sometimes the perseverance can be challenging, and she'll stick with it with a kind of growth mindset so that she can view her obstacles as, not as roadblocks, but for opportunities for growth and success. So the thing that really made Olivia stand out for me is she's got, what I really admire in all kids, she's got work ethic. And that's an essential skill for all of us at any age. She demonstrates diligence in all the tasks that we put, she puts forth maximum effort on assignments and projects and all, just basically throughout our whole day, she's in there with a can-do attitude. So in summary, Olivia is the kind of student that teachers can depend on because she's steady in her interest to learn and grow, and the students also benefit from her caring friendship, and they gravitate towards her because she's so kind and creative, and she has a really fun-loving personality, like, "You should come to the little restaurant we have going on," and her festive salads, she tries to sell me for like $50, $60. So anyways, Olivia brings a really cheerful attitude to our classroom every day, and for that, I'm very grateful. All right, so now we look at Mr. Jones.
I believe we had someone just arrived, Eli Wolf. I believe that he may be out in the hallway. Eli, is that you? Come on in, up right up here, buddy. Somebody's here to talk about you. Turn around, stand right beside that microphone. You don't have to speak, but someone's gonna talk for you. You can stand up there beside him, Eli. It's fine, thank you.
All right. I am honored to present Eli Wolf with this award. Eli is a remarkable student who demonstrates great character every single day. He is a great student both academically and behaviorally in my class. He's an honor to have. He is truly respectful to both adults and his peers. He treats everyone around him like they're his friend, and he is polite and courteous to each and every one of his classmates. He is always the first to volunteer whenever I need help in the classroom, which helps me immensely. Each day, he shows an excitement to learn and to be present here at school. He comes in prepared and ready to get moving on school, gets his stuff done. He finishes his schoolwork on time, and he completes everything to the best of his ability. I truly appreciate the effort he puts in my class. I'm honored to have Eli a part of my class, and I'm very proud of the young man that he is.
From West Elementary, Allison Crisp.
Okay, I have two stories about Ms. Ally to share, is that okay with you? All right. The reason she's getting this best and then some award, first reason, she is a super hard worker, and if she does not understand something, she is gonna work her hardest to get it. Last week, we started some hard things in math, didn't we? And what did you do in recess today, Ally? You got your fast fact folder out. And she worked on getting better at her fast facts so that she was able to work on expanded form a little bit quicker. She was not prompted to do that, she did that totally on her own, and that's saying something. The second story I have is this morning, she came in and we were on the carpet doing some work, and I didn't have to tell her, "Ally, you know, go get your iPad, we're gonna use our word work mat on our iPad." She came over to the carpet, looked at what we were doing, went back, got her materials, and then told another friend what they needed to do, and came and sat down and got that other friend started as well. So she is an awesome problem solver, she's a great addition to her class, and we are so, so proud of her.
From Swain County Middle School, Delaney Sutton. Are you here this evening? Right there in front of me. All right, you stand right here beside me. They're gonna take your picture. All right, I'm gonna introduce Ms. Delaney Sutton. I'm gonna read you what your 6th grade teacher's read about you. Okay? The "Our best part of it, Delaney consistently puts forth her best effort to complete assignments and meet the classroom expectations every day." The "And then some" part, "Delaney goes above and beyond by supporting her classmates, helping them stay organized, complete their work, and remain focused. She is committed to ensuring that everyone is successful." Delaney Sutton. We'll get them the next time, okay? I believe those are all that we have for this evening. So, could we give all of these award winners another round of applause, please? And you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to. However, if you would like to cut out and go do something else this evening, you're free to right now. Thank you all very much. Wait, we have another. Come on up. Come on up. Luke Rodeck, come on up here. Now, Mr.?
Mr. Tredway, you wanna tell us about Luke?
Well, a little I can share, for sure. All right. Must be fair, Luke never comes to the office.
That's a good thing.
Really showing something, Luke? Let me tell you something about Luke. I've done a whole lot of sports for a whole long time, but I've never seen anybody tougher than Luke Rodeck. He comes in the other day, after school, and his arm's folded right here above the elbow, and you can see folded like my sweater would be, and he's sitting there holding it, looking at me, and I said, "Is your arm broke?" He shook his head. Wasn't crying, wasn't fussing, wasn't nothing, just looking at me like, "Hey, here we are. Mr. Posey rigs up a sling, I get him a bottle of water, and off he goes." I'm like, "Daggum." So I'm sure at some point, he did shed a tear, but I didn't see it. So Luke's the kind of guy, you won't know he's on the place because he'll talk to you when he comes in the door, and he'll talk to you going out the door, but that's all you'll see of Luke. So I apologize, Luke, I'm not better prepared to run through your scores and all of that. I know you're a good student, I know you're a good leader at East, but I don't see Luke.
Well... Thank you all so much. Whenever you're ready, pledge and pray.
All right, yeah. And we will open our regular meeting with a pledge and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we bow our unworthy head before you this afternoon. Father, thank you for this time, God. Thank you for our school, dear heavenly Father. We thank you for our community, God, for our parents, God, that make sure their students get to school, dear heavenly Father, Lord God. We just ask your blessings on this meeting, the Savior, Father, help us, God, to be of help to this community, Lord, as we make the decisions that you'd have us to make. Lead, guide, and direct us tonight, in your name we pray. Amen.
One time during the year, it is my responsibility to act as chair for the Board of Education as we elect a new chairperson, and that... We're, I'm just going on. Thank you. And so, this evening, we are taking nominations for the Board of Education chair, and I'll open the floor for nominations for a chairman at this time.
I nominate Mitch Carson.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no more additional nominations, do I have a second?
Second.
With that, having a first and a second, do we have a vote of approval? All in favor, raise your right hand. Anyone opposed? Congratulations, Mitch. You'll be acting board chair for the remainder of the next year, and the rest of the meeting is yours to run.
Need it in good condition.
Okay, next order of business, we'll be selecting a vice chair, so open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Ariel Taylor for vice chair.
Second?
Second.
Now we have a vote and a second. Any more nominations? No more nominations. We have a vote and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Congratulations, Mr. Taylor, you are the new vice chair. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, Mr. Sell, we need to make an amendment to the agenda. We would like to move item number two, our closed session, to after action and before FYI. Okay. That part of the meeting. That's fine. Will there be any vote after that closed session? Okay. No voting after that closed session. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment?
Motion.
Do you have anything?
I need to add one more action item, if I may please, and that would be action item C, the personnel. Okay? With the second amendment, do I have any, or do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, show your right hand. Motion carries. Do I have a motion, or actually, I guess, do I have a motion or anything to add to the consent agenda for the personnel amendments?
Nothing to add, so move to approve.
Second. All in favor, show your right hand. Okay, we will move on now to public comment. We'll be moving to public comment, and first, we have Mrs. Karen Williams. And if you'll come up, we're gonna, we're still allowing three minutes, is that correct, Cody?
Yes.
We're still allowing three minutes. We're gonna allow three minutes.
Okay, sir.
The time will start when you start. Mr. Holt's gonna help, I'll give us a timer going. But again, just for the public knowledge, you're allowed to submit any paper information or email information to us that we will read over in that way of comment. So whenever you're ready.
All right, good evening. I'm gonna read really fast. As most of you know, my name is Karen Williams-Lanning, and I'm in my 23rd year of serving Swain County Schools as a band director. I watch each school board meeting on the Maroon Devil Network in order to stay informed about the decisions being made in our system. During last month's November board meeting, there was much discussion about the Arts Center and its needed repairs. And while this discussion was taking place, I recognize that there's a lack of knowledge for the integral role that the Arts Center plays within our school system. I contacted Joe Holt, and I asked him to supply event and student usage data so that you could more accurately get an idea of how many students, faculty, and community members this facility serves. Now, you say, Ms. Williams, couldn't you have just emailed this to us? Yes, I could have, but I felt like this was really important for our community and our staff. So the data being supplied for you this evening is over the course of approximately 15 months from August 2024 to August 2025. Joe sent me this, and you will see that there were 55 events if you scroll to the bottom, and I've divided these into four categories. Number one, athletics; number two, concerts and plays; number three, community events; and number four, school system activities. As you can see, there are more school system activities held in the Arts Center than any other category. Joe, if you will hit sheet two, I like graphs. These include school assemblies, moving up ceremonies, senior slideshow, senior cap and gown, Swain County Schools district-wide beginning and end-of-year gatherings, workies testing, hosting state superintendent, WCU beginning teacher programs, activities. I could keep going, but I think you get my idea. In regards to athletics, the Arts Center serves as a practice space for cheerleaders and color guard, holds ring ceremonies, Hall of Fame inductions, banquets, end-of-season football celebrations. The dressing rooms are used, even right now, for that big Franklin basketball game. Refs use those. If you look concerts, middle and high school band, chorus, the plays, obviously, we know that those are involved. And in 15 months, the Arts Center had over 20,000, Joe hit sheet three, 20,000 individual student and staff uses. So guys, this is a kid who is in there either for, let's say they're in there one day for cheerleading, and then the next day, they're in there for a school assembly. We're talking individual student usage, guys, over 20,000 student and staff, that's a lot. And you take the plays and the band out of it, the concerts, all of that, we're still looking at 15,543 uses for this facility. For those of us working in the school system, we know how integral, especially the high school, we know how much the Arts Center is used, we know the role it plays, and I'm sharing this information to highlight how important this space is. I want to thank you and the county commissioners for approving the much-needed repairs that were proposed, and I just hope that you, just can give you a snapshot, a clear picture of how many students, staff, and community members these repairs will impact. This facility is used far beyond arts, and I hope that in the future, serious discussions about fundraising and revenue will be, will include those of us that it will impact. I know this is a really quick snapshot because I have three minutes, so I'm gonna email this to you. I invite communication. You guys know where to find me. I live here, right? I'm here all the time, okay? Band is my life, please. I would love to speak with any of you about this. And again, my goal for being here today is not to be a Karen. What a horrible time to be named Karen, you guys, but it's really not to be a Karen. It is to humbly, humbly inform. That's why I'm here this evening, please. And I'm being honest, it's out of due respect, I just want this information shared to help enlighten and share because you don't work in the school system, you don't know, you're not, you don't realize that we're there every single day and how many students are using this. And so I respectfully thank you for your time and hope this will help you with future decision-making. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Brianna Crisp. Yes, yes, you go ahead and do that, and then we won't start until you're ready. As long as I don't hurt your flame. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll reference this as I say, although I don't know about 90% of you guys in the room, I still get nervous, public speaking, so bear with me. All right, so what you have before you is just an email from an occupational therapist at WNC Sprouts, just kind of giving you an idea of what the reason for OT services would be for a private setting, and then a copy of a proposed MOU from WNC Sprouts. So, again, my name is Bree Crisp, I know several of you, but for those of you that may not know me, born and raised here, graduated here in 2012. I'm married to Lane Crisp, he's a custodian out at West. We have twins who are four years old and attend Bright Adventures. We absolutely have had a wonderful experience at Bright Adventures. But I'm here today essentially just to share my story and give some context to a policy that was presented to you guys at the November school board meeting. My daughter Brenly, she's absolutely wonderful human being, she's extremely bright, but the girl cannot stay on task to save her life. And I know at four, what does that look like? You know, a lot of four-year-olds can't stay on task. It's something that her pediatrician and I have talked about, they recommended some occupational therapy. That started about July, so right before school started. I had been trying to talk to the pre-K staff, and then in, that conversation was directed to the EC director and then the superintendent, and we had had kind of a one-on-one meeting, the three of us, and unfortunately Brenly doesn't qualify for an IEP, so she doesn't qualify for the school-based OT services. If so, signed her up day one, wouldn't even be here. However, right now, WNC Sprouts is wanting to see her once a week for one hour. We were able to do the four-to-five hour, both of my kids are in after-school, I work until 5:00 PM, and my husband works until 6:00. Unfortunately, due to staffing, they're no longer able to offer that timeframe for us. They have requested to be able to come and see her during the school day. They like to go into the homes, into the childcare facilities that these kids are usually at, so they can see them in those environments that they are struggling in. Let me give you an example, I had a parent-teacher conference with Ms. Jennifer Brenly's teacher, and she said Brenly does really well. If I try to give her an assessment and we're at the tables in the middle of their classroom, she can't stay on task. She gets distracted easily, she has to be redirected multiple times. However, Jennifer, being the wonderful teacher she is, pulled her beside her desk where it's just Brenly and Ms. Jennifer, and they were able to administer that assessment, and she excelled in that. All I'm asking is for early interventions to be put in place so that my child does not get behind in school, because unfortunately, when you get behind, oftentimes, you don't ever catch up. My hope would be that with the early interventions, she won't need this long, and then, you know, we're setting the foundation for her education. Let's see. The MOU was emailed to the EC director a couple of weeks ago at this time, I have not got an update on that, and I just want to clarify, I know there's, the policy's out about outside agencies. Our children are on Lane's insurance, so it's the school insurance with, or the state insurance with ETNA. It is private pay, the school is not asked to pay one single penny on that. The only thing we're asking is for them, is for the school to provide a building. I know there was some concerns about like attendance, for example. Again, it's one hour a week. If I were to pull her out of class and bring her back, we're looking at least double that amount of time. This is an organization, they're willing to do background checks. This is a organization, they're willing to do background checks, they're in other school systems in the region for various different things.
Okay, Bree, that's, that's good, finish up your thought.
Yeah, so just encourage you to look into the policy, look into how many students are currently getting outside services for whatever that may be, and make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Erin Millard.
Millard.
Also known as Chevy. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chevy. First things, congratulations to the new chair and the vice chair. I ask your attention to this. Good evening, members of school board, superintendent, and the community. Standing here before you today, not only as a father, but as a concerned uncle and a godparent, my purpose simply is to protect our children and ensure the safety within our schools. Back in 2013, many of us remember the scandal when a video went viral with students engaging in organized fights, beating each other for entertainment and money. At that time, there were even accusations of the staff that may have known or failed to intervene. Administrators struggled to respond, and to this day, unless I have missed something, the results of the investigation were never shared, and the people of Swain County in the story faded, but the concerns shouldn't, shouldn't have. Now, more than a decade later, I am here because history is repeating itself. In November of this year, right before Thanksgiving, students were once again caught participating in only what can be described as a fight club. This was not just kids being kids. I know this because I have seen the rules and regulations and written by the students themselves, as I provided to you the text messages of that chat group, where the rules and regulations and multiple, multiple videos of children fighting for entertainment and fun. I know this, uh, this was found on my nephew's phone, who sadly was one of the kids participating. I've seen the videos, video after video of children fighting, leaving with bruises and blood. On, my own nephew came home injured and trying to hide the truth. We cannot dismiss this as harmless roughhousing and take this, as all it takes is one wrong hit, one slip, one child can lose their life, and then the other child faces criminal charges, and two families are destroyed forever. This is not a risk we can ignore. I am calling tonight for a full investigation into the matter, I am assisting that it can be conducted by an outside entity. As institute investigating itself by definition is a conflict of interest. We need transparency, we need accountability, and most importantly, we need to protect our students. It is simply not believable that a group of 10 to 12 kids could organize repeat fights in hidden spaces, like a bathroom, for extended periods of time, and no adult have acknowledged or even know where these kids are at. If that's true, we have a serious problem of supervision. If it's not true, then we have a serious problem of honesty. Either way, our children deserve better. Our urge is for it to act not quietly, not internally, but openly and, and openly. Let us, let us show the families of Swain County that the students' safety is our highest priority, let us ensure that no child is ever put in this position again. And as I said, I provided you guys with the copies, I also am able to, if you need videos, I, I don't really want to share them because it's minors, but if need be, I can. Please let me know, I'm willing to talk, a couple of you have my contacts, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all, that will wrap up the public comment period. We now move on to item number three, discussion.
Don't believe that there's any discussion for personnel that would take place in closed session. So after that, we have the auditor's report, if you would come and share with us what you have found. Thank you.
The presentation.
Did you send me a?
It's in the shared folder.
Sorry, this was.
It's all good, I can go without it. All right, so appreciate Chairman, Board members, Mr. Sale, opportunity to be able to come here this evening, to be able to share the results of the 2025 audit with you. I am pleased to report the district had an unmodified opinion on your 2425 audit, so congratulations, that's been a longstanding opinion, lots of hard work by the finance staff and district as a whole to be able to achieve that. So excellent job to the finance department and really district as a whole. Some things to the report on the letter outside of the audit, we report significant accounting estimates, those are gonna be kind of the useful life of depreciable assets, net position of pension and OPEB, and as well as the value of sick leave anticipated to be used. Those are gonna be the same estimates that we would estimate across the state, the same that we've estimated in the past, with the exception of sick leave. There was a new accounting standard that went into place this fiscal year in regards to requiring, to require the liability of sick leave that's anticipated to be used. That does not impact your fund balance numbers, that's reported on a different schedule, that's really more related to governments being able to take out debt, and since school districts can't take out debt that requires financing and bonds and whatnot, it's really not as applicable to, to you guys and the, the ending numbers. We did not identify any misstatements, and we did not have any difficulties or disagreements with management, kind of in the transition of finance, as we learned, Ms. Tredway, as she was leaving, we accelerated our timeline and started kind of working on the audit and kind of trying to wrap it up as best as possible while she was here, to be, just having kind of some of that historical knowledge of what had happened, and then wrapped it up while Ms. Hines was here as she continued to, kind of in that position seamlessly, and got it wrapped up, and appreciate all the work that they did in getting us the information kind of in that transition. Looking at fund balance, fund balance, in, within the audit report, if you would like to look at it, I'm gonna be referencing page 15. Fund balance is gonna be what the district would look at really as the district's savings account to be able to use funds for future years. Typically, the general fund is gonna be the funds the county's going to provide, and in that, the district spent a little over $1,000, ending the year at $67,560. Capital outlay is gonna be for the capital projects that the district has, it's gonna be restricted specifically for building, construction, items related to the facilities. Added $31,717 to end the year at 100, a little over 193,000. Those funds will typically fluctuate from year to year, we do have a June 30th hard cutoff, and as you know, a lot of those type of projects are gonna occur over the summer, so June 30th kind of really being the middle of a lot of stuff going on with the capital outlay funds. Individual school funds are gonna be the funds held at the schools, and other special revenue is where the bulk of the district's funds come, where Impact Aid is going to come, which is gonna be the largest chunk of money for kind of the education of students. Added $204,000 to end the year at a little over $6.7 million. So excellent job on that, this was really kind of, this year is the very first year of having no Esser dollars, but we are seeing, you know, the challenge of coming out of those Esser dollars, so good job in hitting that really closely, to be able to add a little bit to fund balance, but really hit very closely in the grand scheme of a almost $30 million budget to, to come within about $200,000, so excellent job. Budget versus actual, starting on page 17 of the statements, pleased to report that the budget that you all passed, along with all of the amendments, that the district came within budget in all areas, so excellent job. Again, just kind of shows some of the fiscal responsibility in knowing what's being spent where. And your district budget's at a more granular level than a lot of districts, so again, just excellent job with that. Jumping ahead to page 23. When we look at the Child Nutrition School Food Service Fund, we look at the cash balances rather than fund balance, just because of the accounting entries that are required in the Child Nutrition Fund, it's a different type of fund because it's primarily sourced by As Students Eat. So with that fund, 100, almost $145,000 was added to the cash balance, ending the year at just under $699,000. So, again, excellent job on that, I will say the trend that we are seeing across the state is a decrease in cash balances within Child Nutrition Funds. A lot of that is because after Esser, the reimbursement rate from the federal government decreased, as well as, we all know, the cost of food is up, the cost of salaries and benefits and whatnot are up, especially a few years ago, DPI and stated, minimum wages increases that specifically impacted Child Nutrition more than other areas, so, again, great job in, in being able to add to cash balances in there. Page 74, I'll jump ahead of a lot of the notes, feel free to read and reach out if you have any questions. Starting on 74 is gonna be our audit findings and question costs. We review internal controls for the financial statements, we did not identify any findings. We also review how the district spent state and federal dollars to ensure that they're within the grant guidelines for each of those different grants, that all the required reports and everything are submitted timely, and pleased to report that there were no issues with state or federal grants. That is all I have to present, are there any questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you. Your fund balances up and food and nutrition's up.
Yes.
Yeah.
And still providing free meals to all the students.
Yes. Praise God. Praise the staff. Yes, I'd like to thank publicly the staff that is directly involved in finances and food and nutrition and all those that impact such a fine audit.
Excellent job to the district and appreciate the opportunity to work with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to keep these?
Yes, they are.
Reports?
Thank you. Next up is policies.
I brought a policy to you last month about private therapy providers, that is the policy that Ms. Crisp was referring to just a little while ago. We explained last month that the reason for this policy is to protect educational time and to also protect with liability concerns. And so, we have worked on, or within, a policy that was provided by, I believe Catawba County. I learned this week from John Henning, our lawyer, that that policy was actually a revision of the policy that was provided for Watauga County by Campbell Shatley lawyers. So, this is not something that is unique to Swain County. Lisa, Ms. Waldrop spoke to you about some of the reasons for this, as I've already mentioned. This particular policy that you have in front of you has now gone again through Campbell Shatley and has been approved by them, it's gone through several of our staff, and I believe it is something that we need to put into place, and I would be pleased to entertain any conversation that you would like to have about this. I may have to refer to Ms. Waldrop on this for any clarification that I don't have. I would be asking for you to approve this later, at least as far as I am planned at this point, okay? Do you have any questions?
I might just want more clarifications, I'm trying to tie together what Bree was saying versus, versus what the policy is stating. So, if I'm understanding correctly, we would only be allowing therapy providers if a student has an IEP or a 504?
During school time, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so, because her, in that case, in Bree's case, her, her daughter doesn't qualify for the IEP, that's why, is that, am I?
Yes.
Understand that correctly, that's why?
Yes.
The WNC Sprouts wouldn't be able to come in?
Yes, during school time, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we, does that pertain to anybody, like, do we have anybody else that this is gonna change any services that they're already getting, like any other students?
Lisa, I, I would, I would need for you to speak to that, the question is, will this change, without mentioning names, would you step to the microphone for us? Will this change services to anyone in our school system at this point?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And I know, I mentioned last time, this is where I'm gonna probably not understand everything, I mentioned we had talked about Cartwheel, but I'm assuming that's not private, is that, or how does that work that we, because we were able to pass for them to come in and do different, um, mental health type services, am I right?
Ms. Sneed, would you come and speak to Cartwheel and how this applies to them or does not, okay?
Sorry.
I know what I know.
We have a contract for them. I need to think through that a second.
Can I ask a quick question while you're thinking?
You can.
About that might help with that. In determining the, the occupational therapy that we have already in the schools, is that separate and apart from the contracted services of Cartwheel?
Well, it is separate, that's OT versus counseling, and we don't actually have Cartwheel in all of our, we don't have a provider in all of our schools as far as an outside provider, like a clinician. We have a clinician, but they're not seen in all the schools, so that would be a difference in Cartwheel, we don't have that service.
Well, this one does cover mental health, too. The policy does cover mental health, that's why I was like, maybe they're not private, and also, and I know it's on Zoom, but it's still within school hours, so I'm trying to figure out if that, if Cartwheel fits into this policy.
We're actually trying to not do it during school hours, and we're doing it after hours on the weekends.
Cartwheel, Cartwheel is not a private provider, we have a contract with Cartwheel through state funding.
Yes, that's correct.
That was provided for us by the general legislature after, from, from Hurricane Helene.
Yes.
So the difference is, they're not private.
Except them from this policy.
But then, but is that different than, than the MOU?
We will have an MOU as part of their contract, okay? But the MOU that's been provided to you is not for someone who is receiving funding from any school fund sources or state fund sources, it is a private provider.
And it's also, if you think about it, it's, it's like Cartwheel is a service that we can't provide as a school, so we have to contract with them to provide it. OT services and speech services and PT services, we can provide that, because we have our own providers for that.
But only if they have an IEP, right?
Well, yes, if they have an IEP, or even if they have like a 504, but it has to be educationally relevant.
Okay, and who determines that?
The IP team would determine, and you would have to have testing, so you'd have to have like a referral, you'd go through the referral process.
Okay, does that come from a pediatrician? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand the whole.
No, not necessarily, the, I mean, they could like, the pediatrician could refer somebody, and we could, as an IP team, meet and see if we needed to, to go on with further testing to determine eligibility for any service.
Okay, okay. And this, will this, I know there's lots of people in and out of all those schools that come and do different services. I'm, don't understand, or I wouldn't pretend to even know how many people come in. So will it affect any other service? Is there anybody, any other entity that's not going to be able to come in if we pass this? Is there anybody else that you can think of from any schools? Like, do we have like a list of people that say when they come to the school that we know, like what facility they're with?
We do have a list.
Okay, okay. So this wouldn't change any services for anybody else that we know of?
Not that we are aware of.
Okay.
And the MOU is also something that we just need to make sure we have in place if, if we needed a service outside.
Okay.
So everybody's coming in, has a MOU on file?
Yes.
Because they file under this, right? We wouldn't, we wouldn't expand who we have MOUs with unless they're through the school, through who the school is contracted with, with funding.
Not necessarily with funding, no.
See, I think that's part of, that's part of the issue here. Because when we talk about fund sources, some are state or school fund sources that are, that are coming actually through our accounts, and then anyone outside of that would be a private provider, okay? If we, if the funding is coming through our sources, then we're going to have a contract with that organization, which will also include the same elements as the MOU. For an organization that we're not providing funding for, if they're going to be on our campus or providing any services, we will have a separate MOU with them, a separate understanding between us. But those particular organizations, because they don't receive funding from school or from our, our fund sources, would, would be, would need to provide their services outside, outside of school time.
Okay, unless the IEP team acknowledged, acknowledged it, or unless we sign an MOU.
If the IEP team is recommending, and then those services are, are approved for that student, those would be our providers, rather than a private provider. And, and that, that's one of the distinguishing characteristics of this, which I may be repeating what you already know. But when Lisa said, we have OT providers, those are for IEP 504s. This particular is an OT that is private, not part of an IEP, not part of a 504. You already understand that, I think.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, one of the concerns, Lisa, is that if we begin as a school system to allow private providers to use our facilities and our time to provide services for students, then that's going to become, and we're already seeing this, that's going to become more and more, and I'm going to use a word that is not kind here, and I don't mean it that way, it's going to be more and more of an interruption during the school day, okay? And it is possible then that we could end up with a student who has received services of some sort, and then their, their private provider leaves, and we're left to take care of problems that come from after that, particularly when we're talking about a mental health provider of some sort, okay? Now, that would not necessarily be as large a concern with OT, but that is a concern that we have. We're left to take care of what happens after the private provider leaves, okay? And we are trying to minimize that liability and expectation and responsibility, and liability.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
What a, what a concern, I could see this being a concern, is that a private provider, providing services within the school system can't share anything that they've discussed with the child with the school system, because it's a different organization, not within the school system or any MOU or contracted with us.
If there's an MOU with that organization, that MOU would need to include the expectation of shared knowledge, okay? And that can be adjusted through permission from the parents. What's that called, Barbara? Consent. Consent, yes.
So right now, there's no private providers coming into the school?
Not that, not that are, outside of a contractual agreement with Swin County Schools. Did I say that correctly?
That's correct, because we do, we like, for instance, we do contract some speech services through Western Carolina University. We have an MOU with them, and we've had them for years. We also contract with a physical therapist, who we've had a contract with her for years, and we have a MOU with her. But again, those are services that we can't provide, so we, we as a school have asked them to provide that for us.
And that's just for students that have IEPs and 504s?
Anybody else have a question, concern? No, thank you, ladies. Any other thoughts that you want to share on that, anyone? You also have another policy that is a first reading policy, and it has to do with attendance. We looked at attendance a year or eighteen months ago, and the reason that this has come back up is as we've been studying our processes for tracking and, and holding accountable families that have excessive unexcused absences as described by law, we found that we could expedite the process and make it a little simpler, okay? And so we went back in and did some work in this particular policy to make that happen. We also found, as we were looking at this policy, Policy 4400, that the statement in it is that in order for a student to be counted present, they have to attend half the day. It's my understanding that in the new information system, which is Infinite Campus, it, the system requires fifty-one percent rather than fifty percent, and so we've made that adjustment. I know that sounds like a minor issue, but we're, we're following technicalities on this, okay? Also, the policy made some statements about who was responsible for seeing that these things happen, and a lot of the responsibility fell to the principal, and we decided that we would add language that said "principal" or "designee," so the principal could assign that to someone to help loosen their days up just a little bit. And actually, our social workers are responsible for reporting some of these things themselves, and that wasn't necessarily written in the policy, okay? And then there's some clerical movement around also. I shared this policy with John Henning of Campbell Shatley, and there were some comments that he made on the side, and then I had Sheri Wright respond to those comments to, to help you understand that we have those in hand already. Again, this is first reading. I know that you're seeing it tonight, probably for the first time, or for one of the first times. I would ask that you look at it, and then that we have a conversation about this in January, please, okay? Okay?
Are you able to tell us what fifty-one percent looks like?
Depends upon.
It really depends on the school.
Depends on the school.
It depends on the school.
And the length of the day.
Yes.
Because it's minute, like it's minutes at that point.
It's two minutes.
It was eleven thirty, it was sort of a bold statement, and that is not true.
Right.
And so it really just depends on what time they get there or what time they leave. But yeah, I can bring better clarification in January if you want.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. I know, like, for me, one morning, my daughter had an appointment in Asheville, so I sent her to school for like twenty-two minutes. We quick went and came right back, because she had a game that evening, and I was, remember thinking, like, trying to count the minutes, but I really was ballparking it, and so it might be good for people to know exactly what they're up against if they're looking at it like that.
All the day managers and secretaries of the schools know what their time is on a normal school day.
Yeah.
So they, like I said, it just, the college starts early, the high school starts a little earlier, and the elementary, for example, it just changes. And it's, it's a huge delay, especially by the high school calls and the health building.
Right. And is, and is it like fifty-one percent from the first bell to the last bell, or does, does it get, does time get worked in difference with lunch? Okay, yeah, and so then it's different parts of the day depending on your lunches, right?
When we first went into campus, they took the twenty-five minutes of lunch straight off the top of the day.
Okay.
Which was a huge issue, but they fixed that problem. We assigned high school a lunch, and a lunch time period to their schedule, so that it takes it off appropriately, based on their calendar check out.
Okay.
So if you have a twenty-two minute appointment and you can do it during lunch, then you don't miss any instructional time?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Play, it's, it's the game, guys, you know?
I know.
It's expected to do. And, and it's, we're not, we're not out to get anybody, we're just out to follow the law and complete it the way that it's handed to us, the best that we know now, okay? And I want to go back to what we were talking about with, with Bree, just a minute if I can. I, I don't want anyone to think that, that we're not compassionate for, for her family or for anyone else's family. We're looking at the picture as a whole, okay? And we're trying to take care of our school system and our instructional time, and sometimes it's difficult to know exactly where, where to put boundaries and lines, okay? And that's why we're doing this, okay? So Sheri will bring that information about Policy 4400, and then let's talk about it again in January, if you would please, okay? We have been given the opportunity by the Department of Public Instruction to retest students in a different way than we have in the past. For several years, Swin County has not retested students, and what that means is, after a student takes their state mandated EOG or EOC, if they don't score at a particular level, then they can be retested. In the past, retesting could be at parent request, and we have chosen not to retest. Almost every school district around us and across the state is retesting right now, okay? And I'll tell you that there is an increase in test scores, but it is not significant from retesting, probably less than ten percent improvement, okay? However, there are other reasons for retesting. So Sheri is going to come and to talk to you about our policy and our plan for that, that we are, we intend to implement this year, doesn't take approval, I just want you to have information. And I'm going to step to the restroom, Mitch.
I was going to talk about this.
You've got three minutes.
Thank you, Mitch. I can, I, it takes longer than that for me to even start talking. How long have you known me? So retesting is sort of a new idea for us, because a lot of times you've heard credit recovery, and they can retest if they want to, and I was in a discussion today where I was like, we've got to start talking about things a little differently. But retesting can happen in several ways. You can, if you're not, you have to be not proficient, and you have to do it within a testing window. So what that means, for example, is that if a student tests on Wednesday, and your, our testing window is Monday to Friday, they need to test. And not only do, is that sort of hard, we've worked really hard at the high school, is that you also have to call the parent and get permission, and then you have to put them back in the system, and they get their name there, so that they can have a new access code, so they can retest. So what we try to do at the high school is all, in the past, in the past few years, our testing schedule at the high school has been EOCs in the morning and teacher exams in the afternoon, and first period is on Monday, second period's on Tuesday, et cetera. Well, because of retesting, and we want to try to get those kids in there who've had the opportunity, or their parents have chosen for them to opt in, we have said that all EOCs are on Monday and Tuesday. So instead of going by class period, we're going by subject, and we've tried to even out the number of students that are testing to start with. Most tests come back, their school will come back the next day, and the state has made it a local decision on how you get parents to opt in. So what we did this year is, at the high school, is sent out a survey or email or Tyler Survey form, where they went ahead and opted in or not, and said, if your child ends up not being proficient, do you want them to retest or not? And so there's a list of those students. We'll go ahead and get those students loaded in, just in case they aren't proficient. There's, this was, has been a whole semester process from the state. When we first heard about all these changes they were making to it back in, I think, the first of August, they were going to let anybody retest. So say you were a student that got a four instead of a five, and you thought you should have a five, you know, your high flyers that are really, why anybody won't test twice? I'm not sure, but anyway, they've changed it to where it's not proficient. So we have made, Tyler has made teacher exams be on Friday this week, is that this week? It is. This week, so that we are sure we'll have enough for accommodations and those kinds of things with students to cover everything we need to get them in. Historically, English II has taken several weeks to get back, so for the English II retests, the state has said that we, you would get four days past the day of the last test score you got back, because normally it comes in chunks for English II. So for the elementary and middle, they will be figuring out their plan. The good thing about year-long courses is they get a ten-day test window, so that spreads that out a little bit with them, so in the spring, when they test, it will be easier to get those students in. So with credit recovery, the students, if they've not been proficient, they will test, and so that's just like a normal procedure for them. So any questions? We test, test, test.
So retest window, if, if they're testing Monday through Friday, they got to retest by that Friday, except for like English II.
Yes. Yeah. And so with already getting the permissions and doing all that back work in advance, you know, we can, we hopefully can get those kids in there that are wanting to, or their parents want them, they may not want to, but their parents will.
So the schedule we got now, all the testing will be done on Monday and Tuesday?
For the most part, except for CTE state mandated exams, they're, they're going to test on Wednesday, Thursday?
They have to retest on Friday.
They, state, CTE does not retest, just EOCs, which is biology, English II, Math I and Math III.
We don't have any relative data on how many that were non-proficient would be utilizing the retests, because we haven't been doing it correctly.
Right, we don't, or, and if it really helps them to become proficient. You know, for me, I think just that them knowing they might have to test again might push some of those kids that are on the bubble to go ahead and work maybe a little extra harder the first time. And so I think we're, we're still in discussion with the elementaries and, and how we'll make that work for the best.
But there's another group, and you may have said this already, and if I'm repeating what you said, forgive me, there's another group of students who may be having a difficult day, or have, and, and they've struggled on the test that day, you know? And having an opportunity to retest would allow them to take it at a different time with a different mindset, you know? Because not everybody tests perfectly every day.
I will say that at state conference, most counties are retesting. It is something, and, you know, you hate to deprive our students of something that's being offered somewhere else. It is a local decision on how it goes forward and if we do it or not, so we've chosen to see it and see what the date is.
Okay. Questions or thoughts?
Thank you.
I'm going to brag on Millie Hines. Millie has stepped into an incredible role with a lot of accountability, and if there is anyone in the school system who is drinking from the fire hose, it's Millie right now, and she's doing it with such grace and such integrity, and I'm just pleased that we have her. And I don't think that we recognize how fortunate we have been. And I don't think that we recognize how fortunate we have been and how fortunate we are now to be able to have a, a school finance officer without struggling. Across the state, there is a tremendous amount of concern about finding school finance officers because it's, it, school finance is a different animal than anything else that you'll ever see. And so Millie is working with Stephanie still and also with her mentor who's coming this Wednesday. And they have put together a budget for this calendar, for this budget year. We need to sit down and to look at that together, and I would like for that to be a special session for us. Everyone doesn't have to attend. I know, Lisa, I know.
I was just smiling at Millie.
I know. I've, I've asked you guys to meet more as a board than almost any board other than during the pandemic. And I appreciate your time, but I want for us to be able to sit down and look at it and just talk, okay? And I want Millie to have the opportunity to, to answer what she can and then find the answers that she needs to find. This budget, this particular budget year is co-produced, okay? Stephanie has still had her hands in a lot of this. Next year, it'll be all Millie's. So let's just, let's find a time when we can sit down, preferably would like to do this before the next, before the next board meeting, which is, I believe, January the 12th, okay?
Do you have a proposed time?
I really don't, Lisa. I would like to get it done before Christmas, but I know that this is a hard season for a lot of people. So if we could get it done, you know, next week, if you have time, if that's too soon, if we could do it the first week we get back to school, that would be great too. Are there, are there, how, Mitch, how would you suggest that we find a date on this without taking a bunch of meeting time here?
We can get our, our text third going on, open dates that are available and times.
Okay.
You can start the ball rolling if there was a certain window that you wanted to achieve and start around.
I'll send some, some specific dates and then you all tell me that they can't work.
What kind of time slot do we think this is, hour, two hour?
I would, I would allow two hours.
Okay.
And then I would also, Casey, expect some follow-up probably by email, okay? All right. Thank you all for understanding that, we just need to do that. We have received a $200,000 grant through the Dogwood Organization in partnership with Franklin Covey and also as a, with a community partner of the Great Smoky Mountain Railway to help us revitalize the Leader in Me program. We have been part of Leader in Me for over a decade. However, I think that everyone in this room who has been part of that will admit that it has lost its, its vitality. And we, if we're going to do this, we need to do it well. And so I have asked Sheri to pull together a team of lighthouse leaders, like Leader in Me leaders from the schools, and their charge is to make this work and to make it authentic and not something that we check a box on. If we can't put this in the classroom and make it authentic, then we don't need to spend our time doing it. It's that simple. This $200,000 gives us the next two years to do that, to rebuild the program, to pay for everything that it costs to have the rights to Leader in Me, and then at the end of that, make a final decision about whether or not Leader in Me needs to be part of Swin County Schools anymore, okay? This will help free up money in our local budget. Everyone should say amen, okay? It will save us probably at least fifty to sixty thousand dollars total each budget year of, until 2028, all right? So this is a blessing in a lot of ways, okay? And I really appreciate Sheri, affectionately known as the Bulldozer, who has taken this charge by the horns and the, the team of staff that were totally honest in a meeting last week and said, "If we're going to do this, we need to fix some things." And we're going to fix them.
Will you remind me which two, is it two, I think two schools, or Leader in Me?
We have a lighthouse school at the middle school and at the pre-K, which is the only pre-K in the state of North Carolina with, which is a lighthouse.
Okay.
We have some schools that are considering and maybe planning to pursue lighthouse status. They don't know this yet, but I'm going to put that on hold for now.
Okay.
We're going to slow the process and make sure that we're, that we're doing it well, okay?
I got you.
I hadn't told them that until just now.
Sorry.
I hope that that doesn't make them upset. That should make them smile. You're welcome. I do care about the staff, all right? Those are all of the discussion items for this evening. Can we move to action?
Let's move to the action.
I recommend that the Swin County Board of Education approve the consent agenda, including personnel and the minutes from November 3rd and November 18th, 2025 meetings.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? Show your hands.
I just realized we didn't put a, a motion in. Yes, I did, never mind. I recommend that the Swin County Board of Education approve Policy 4004, 5021, private student service providers. However, if you would wish to table that, that's also your option.
I'd kind of like to table that.
Do we have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table. I think I'd like some more clarification on it before, I feel confident in it.
I would agree. I think that's a wise decision.
Any further conversation?
Was there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I think I was the second, sorry.
Okay, all right.
Any further conversation? No conversation. All in favor, just raise your hand. Motion will be, or motion accepted to table the Swin County Board of Education's approval of the private student service providers policy.
We added a C. Seven years ago, I was given the opportunity, forgive me, to serve Swin County Schools as superintendent. And I never planned, but God placed it in my lap. And so for seven years, we've worked very hard to, to make that effective, and I think we've done some good things. But the days are long and the nights are hard. And it's time for me to move to a different stage of life. And so this evening, I present to you my retirement and resignation. Effective April 30th of 2026, I beg your forgiveness for the emotion. But I've loved this system for 38 years. And I will love it to the day I die. And it has been my honor to serve the students and the staff the best, to the best of my ability. So I thank you and I request that you allow me to retire now. Thank you.
Do we have a recommendation? Do we have comments or concerns?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for your service. Is there any action we need to take on that?
You have to approve it. It doesn't matter because I'm not coming back.
Thirty-eight years is a long time.
Upon the recommendation, do we have a motion to accept retirement resignation?
Seems like we have to accept it.
Reluctantly but honorably, I will make a motion to accept that retirement.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second. Any more concern or comment? All in favor?
Thank you. And thank you.
Motion's passed.
We need to go to closed session.
Okay, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion to Board of Education go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11 under subsection A1 and 5 to prevent the disclosure of privileged confidential information, specifically personnel.
Second.
All in favor, stand up. Closed session. Done. We will be closing out from closed session, so...